All right, good evening and welcome to Heartland Township and the Planning Commission Meeting of Thursday, January 15th. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Next up, Item 3. I'd like to take a moment and recognize and remember Larry Hopkins. He was a great Planning Commissioner, a dedicated clerk and board member, and a good friend with a moment of silence, please. Item 4. Keith, would you like to take one, please?
Sure. Okay. Chairman Larry Fox?
Here.
Please, Chair Giff, not here. Sue Grissom?
Here.
Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Tom Murphy?
Here.
So, and Joe Kline?
I'm here. Of course, we have Dave down there, again.
Dave down on the end, okay. Thank you. I'd like to take the opportunity to also welcome our new member to the Planning Commission, Joe Kline.
Former Planning Commissioner, if you don't recall. Oh, yeah. Prior to my election to the Board, I was on the Planning Commission for about three years. So, I was one of, along with Bill Fountain and Joe Petrucci, and we both got elected to the Board. So, I hope I can do as well as Larry, because you're absolutely right. Larry was a dedicated Planning Commissioner, but he was also a dedicated clerk, and he provided a, he was a great liaison to the Board from this body to the Heartland Township Board. We have a lot of confidence in this Board, this Commission, from the Board, I will tell you that. I don't think over the last 10 years that I recall any type of controversy, but I will tell you that prior to that time, I, for some reason, we did cause some controversy anyway. But we had a lot of fun back then, so, in any case, it's a pleasure to be here and hopefully I can perform the work as well as Larry did.
You're welcome, thank you. Item 5 will be approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kline, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Foes, nay, motion carries. Item 6, approval of our meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for December 4th, 2014.
We have a motion from Commissioner Grissom, a second from Commissioner Voight. Are there any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, nay, motion carries. Item 7, call to the public, none. Eight public hearing, none. One reminder here, we're recording this for purposes of our meeting minutes, so make sure when we're speaking this evening, we speak into the mic. Forgot to mention that at the beginning. So, we're up to Item 9, 9A, which is our 2015 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, dated January 15, 2015, and I think at this time, we'll turn it over to our Planning Director, David Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Happy New Year. So, this is the next step in the Planning Commission's ongoing process of updating the Township's comprehensive plan, and particularly the residential component of the future land use plan and the future land use map within that comprehensive plan. As you hear me mention every time, the intent behind this process is looking at our residential land use designations and determining whether those designations are appropriate, given the housing market as it exists today, and whether our future land use map is developed in such a way that it could accommodate the type of housing that the market demands. Part of that was the Township contract with a professional consultant to do a housing market study. We got the results of that late summer, and that study told us, here's the types of housing that Heartland Township could absorb over the next five years. And so, given that information's background, the Planning Commission has been working over the last couple of months to look at our future land use plan, look at our future land use map, particularly the residential designations within those, and determine whether any changes need to be made to accommodate that housing demand that our housing study says we can expect. So, the Planning Commission has worked through a number of future land use residential designations, as I mentioned, over the last couple of months. These are now the last five designations that the Planning Commission agreed we were going to take a look at as part of this process. Some of these are a little bit unique in that they're not strictly residential designations. We've already covered those. The five that we want to tackle tonight, some of them do have a residential components, some of them do not, but because they have the potential to be impacted more particularly by residential development, or because they are land use designations that have the potential to, on certain properties, be re-designated to a residential component, then the question is, well, do we have enough of that non-residential land use designation for certain amounts of land to be converted to a residential designation? And as we get into them, I'll maybe point out a couple of those in particular. So, the five that we're discussing tonight are the planned industrial research and development designation, the, bear with me, the residential recreation, the public quasi-public, the special planning area, and then one that's kind of a unique one, that's the natural resource conservation recreation designation. Planned industrial research and development, as its name implies, is meant to be a designation to accommodate kind of large-scale research and development-type developments, which could be any combination of educational facility, light industrial, a medical campus of some sort, or a medical campus with some periphery office-type uses. That's what's envisioned with the planned research and development designation. And that designation is located primarily along our major corridors in two specific areas. One is at the Clyde Road and US 23 interchange. All of those properties in the dark purple on all four corners of the interchange are currently master-planned for the planned industrial R&amp;D. And then down along the Old 23 corridor is where the other large grouping of that designation is located. Now, I'll remind the Planning Commission again that the purpose of us going through this comprehensive plan update is to look primarily at residential development, again, to ensure that we have a land use plan that accommodates what the market is demanding. But there's some large tracts of land that are currently designated planned industrial research and development that very early in this process, this Planning Commission agreed would probably be ones that we would want to take a look at, to determine whether those properties may be more appropriate for a residential designation. And one example of that is at the southwest corner of Old 23 and Bergen Road. So, this is undeveloped property right now that's adjacent to Meadowview Estates, and we have had contact with representatives of the owner of this property that have expressed interest in having that go residential. So, while the Planning Commission isn't going to make any decisions tonight on changes to the future land use map, that's going to be in the coming weeks. This is one where I think we take at least a minute to look at it specifically, and at least start the discussion of whether that corner, given the uses in proximity to it, given its infrastructure service currently, there is a sewer main along Bergen Road, so that property would potentially be served by municipal sewer, given that there is light industrial, industrial zoning, and future land use designations in proximity to it, I'd be interested in starting the conversation of, is this an area where we could see that going toward a residential designation, rather than keeping it in the planned industrial research and development designation? Another thing to keep in mind is that, you know, traditionally, a lot of your community's tax base comes from your industrial, light industrial, office, commercial zone property, more so on a square foot basis than residentially zoned property. So, it could be argued that if you give a developable tract of property like this up from its potential for industrial development to residential development, it does have the potency, the potential to impact your tax base. And so, these are the things that a Planning Commission needs to consider when making, you know, something of a major decision on something like this. Also keeping in mind that there has been discussion on whether all four corners of the interchange are most appropriate in the planned industrial R&amp;D, and even more so, we looked at the potential for some of these properties where I'm moving my mouse right now, I hope everybody can see. Should those have more of a higher-density residential component in close proximity to them, the theory being if this land were to ever develop as some sort of a medical campus, or an office park, something like that, it makes sense that the people who work there would potentially want to live in close proximity. We already have some property adjacent to a master plan for multifamily, currently undeveloped property for the most part, and one of the conversations that happened early on was, would we want to look at some more properties along the periphery of this area for something of a higher-density multifamily that we already know Heartland Township is lacking? So, again, I want to start that conversation. I don't know that we're necessarily going to finish that conversation, resolve that conversation today, but that is why the, even though it's not a residential designation, the planned industrial R&amp;D land use designation is before the Planning Commission this evening to start talking about potentially moving some of it toward a residential designation, potentially. Interested to hear if anyone's got any thoughts?
My question is that with regard to the light, this is right now, I think, industrial research and development area that you've designated, correct? But it's currently zoned light industrial, correct?
I, that's, that may very well still be zoned CA conservation agriculture. If you bear with me for just a moment, I can confirm that for you.
The question, the first question I have is, when you look at Heartland Township and the number of land uses and the percentages of property that are set aside for the various land uses, how do we compare to, you know, similar communities or where communities are growing in terms of the amount that we have sort of designated as industrial research and development? I mean, this, right now, it's like, it looks like we're approximately 3% of our township is dedicated to that, and our residential is far in excess of.
Correct. So, I, it's a good question, and one that I don't have an answer to off the top of my head in terms of whether that 3% is low or high, or right where we should be for a community such as ours. It's certainly something we can look into. I could maybe, I could maybe back into the answer a little bit by saying that while our developed light industrial properties are 90-something percent occupied, last time I talked to the assessing department, we do still have a healthy portion, and particularly up at Clyde Road, a healthy portion of properties zoned planned industrial R&amp;D that are still So, you could sort of take that argument two ways, that we are, you know, we're at capacity for what we have that's developed, but at the same time, we have some undeveloped property that's still sitting undeveloped.
Right. I look at some of the other industrial, non-residential land uses to offset, should be used to offset those areas that are public, public lands. And we have such a huge campus of the schools located, and we have multiple churches, we have public parks, and we have public buildings, and I think that's right around 4% to 6%? When you add up all the amount, or is it much higher than that? Do you know?
I don't know. Of all the publicly-owned land in the township?
Yes.
I don't know the answer to that one off the top of my head.
Okay. So, I think when we look at these uses, and just my comment, when we're looking at whether we should attenuate the amount of land that might be set aside for industrial use, I think the Board would like to consider that in light of the exempt parcels, which has zero tax base, puts demands on the infrastructure and everything in the community, that somehow we need to make, we have some balance there. So, before I would really consider removing something from an industrial, from the land use map that might be set aside industrial, I would look to see where we might replace that kind of land use at some point in time. I also think that when we look at our light industrial areas, the land use map that we have here should also guide us in terms of capital improvement plans, in terms of what sort of things we want to be available. These areas are sewered, but there, I think there's only one area that's watered. Clyde Road doesn't have water.
No.
The south has water. But we need to start talking about other types of infrastructure that are going to be put demands on these light industrial areas, like somehow getting fiber optics and things like that, the uses that we hope that'll be there can actually perform the way they need to perform. So, I don't know, that's just kind of my overall view on that.
Okay. Correct. Any other questions or comments on the planned industrial R&amp;D land use designation?
Well, I guess my comment would be if we're going to take a planned light industrial or planned industrial research and development and convert it to a residential, the one at Bergen may be a good choice for if we're going to do it, because of its proximity to everything. It's right at the interchange, it's near the commercial, it's near the schools, it's near everything, and it would be, it would be a very desirable developable piece. Not that that's our concern, but its location and its services are a concern of ours. If we're going to, if we're going to turn one, that would be a good one to look at versus Clyde Road, because then you're having to drive to get to everything. You're up, you're up two miles, which is not a long way when you live in a semi-rural community as we do, but those conveniences, look at where everything is, it's right at the interchange, where it should be.
I agree, but to follow up with Joe, where Joe was heading, I think, is if you convert that at Bergen Road, we probably should move that to somewhere else, and if you, just because I think we might be taking away too much of an opportunity in the future for industrial research. And if you look at the infrastructure down there, fortunately, or unfortunately for us maybe, but there's plenty of power there because of the substation, there's already sewer and water. Now, the Clyde Road has sewer. I've said for years that probably the best place for a water tower would have been on top of the hill up there, so if an industrial park goes in, I'm sure they'd create their own water source anyway, so that you have the water and sewer, then you have to deal with getting power up there. And the power that would be required from, for an industrial area probably takes some effort and probably step on a few toes to launch it up that far north, but come from the substation is probably where it'd come from. But anyway, so I agree that that would be a good corner to convert to residential if we really feel there's another need to, which we, I think we've already talked enough to realize that there is a need for more type of residential areas. So, when the thought of converting it, or instead of just converting it, moving that to another area, I think is where Joe is kind of heading, to make sure, 3% doesn't seem like a lot. And if you look at areas like Howell, for example, they have a, I bet they have a bigger than 3% percentage in industrial, and between the township and city, but they, there's a pretty good source of income there, I think, so, and jobs. So, we want to be careful not to take away too much of it. Although, I'm not sure, I want to look at a bunch of industries down there, but keep in mind, when we get ready to convert it, let's think about moving it as well.
Well, you have to, I don't pretend to know what the planned industrial research companies would be looking for, but I certainly agree with Joe's comment on some of the infrastructure components of, you know, the, of the electronic-type access and those types of things, and what we have around here and don't have around here, and how we get it are those things, so, are the things to look at. So, I would agree with everybody's comment so far. And I would agree, I don't know if 3% is good or bad. I don't know.
I don't either. I don't know what the answer to that is. I mean, we're sort of already, you know, we're a bedroom community. I mean, we're not going to necessarily change that, but we, you know, I mean, we have to recognize there are demands on our, on our infrastructure and demands on our populace as such that we got to kind of balance those kinds of things, our tax base, in a manner that supports those, the things we have going on here.
Right.
We don't, if you can't push everything off, it's got to get, well, let's just say it needs to be spread.
Well, figure out what, how much you need, and then let's figure out what we need to do to have it, because it doesn't do any good being vacant either.
We can see, I'm sorry, we can see what we can do to look into whether that 3% is the right number or not. I mean, it's, part of it is, you know, you got to understand we're 36 square miles, whereas the city of Howell is only this many square miles, and, you know, and then how much of our, of our total land is served by the infrastructure that could support light industrial. So, you kind of have to weigh those things against that 3%. But I think, I, we could take a, take an attempt at looking into, you know, making some sort of an apples-to-apples comparison about whether that's the, whether that's the right number.
And I think, I agree, we're not going to change it. We're not going to change this community to all of a sudden become a manufacturing hub of, you know, Livingston County even, but we certainly have to have some balance. Somebody wants to be here in the industrial segment. Any other comments on that?
Well, I was just going to make a comment, I agree with everybody's proposal here or observation. Personally, from my perspective, the southern area that we're looking at there at Old 23 and Bergen Road, since that area already has industrial, and there's nothing like that type of industry on the Clyde orders, I guess I would be more inclined to believe that you would leave that property, light industrial at Bergen Road, and possibly look at the Clyde. Now, I do agree that, I think a key question here is, is 3% the right number, a good number, a low number, and that's where we start from, but since there is no light industrial up at the US 23 Clyde Road intersection, I'm more, I'm leading more in favor of possibly looking at one of those parcels up there as residential than I am the Bergen Road, so, just a thought.
Okay. Anything, Tom?
So, I agree with everyone's comments, that's a very good, a good conversation. But I kind of tend to agree with Mike, Michael, that the, if we already have industry there, I'll call it, electricity's there, if we want to, if we want to keep that look, or keep that area to be that, instead of starting at two locations and the infrastructure maybe not being there, like Joe said, we don't, we don't have electricity up in that northern area, you know, what would it take to get it there? If it would, what would be other obstacles? Or maybe it was Keith, and how do you get it there? The 3% for sure is a question, but I kind of agree with Mike that, that maybe that area should stay the same. You know, earlier today, it's funny, because I was looking at this, and I thought, because of the developments that are in the area, that I actually made a note that maybe that would be a good place to consider residential, right here at Bergen, but now that I hear the conversation, maybe it makes more sense to, I think I would support leaving that as it is, and maybe not switching it over.
Well, I'm listening and agreeing, but I'll throw something for you to sleep on tonight, and add it, the cost to make Clark, or Clyde Road residential is very heavy, too, and you already have the infrastructure sitting there for that, and industrial parks, who's paying for it versus a subdivision of 100 houses? What's the reality of the situation, and do your, do your residential properties want to be close to school? Do they want to be close to church? Do they want to be close to the stores? And do your industrials want to be sitting there at 59 and Old 23, trying to deal with getting to the freeway and the traffic that's already associated with being there? But I've not made my mind up either.
And maybe another look is, at the Bergen, Old 23 area, there's three parcels defined there, and maybe it's a split, maybe, for example, light industrial space along the 23 corridor, and we look at residential at one or two of the other parcels as well as an alternative.
One thing that bothers me about industrial, and I know, maybe I shouldn't throw this in, but looking back over the years, how many factories have your developments like that sitting there empty for many years? You look at the empty building, you look at the grass growing up around it, or the grass growing up in the parking lot. So, when we decide where we want to put it, if we want to move it, we need to think about, that's an entrance in, that area's an entrance into the south part of Heartland, and is that the vision we want people to see, if in fact that happens? It's just, I know, it's just one little thing to think about, but. I did have some questions about the zoning map. You mentioned, Dave, that Clyde is our currently zoned industrial?
Zoned?
I thought that's what you said.
No, no.
Yeah, it's zoned commercial.
On the east side of the expressway.
Right, okay. I, okay, I'm not for sure, I just wanted to make sure I didn't see something you did too.
Yep. And then, trustee Kline asked about the zoning of the southwest corner of Bergen, Old 23, it is still zoned conservation agriculture.
Well, it'll certainly be a good discussion when we come back. Any other comments on it? Dave, would you like to move us to the next one?
Yes, sir. The next land use category that we want to take a look at is the, is a residential designation, and it's the residential recreation, and that land use designation is exclusively located in and around the Walden Woods Resort, around Lake Walden, the Majestic Golf Course, north and south side of Kraus. So, this is a pretty broad land use designation that is meant to accommodate really a lot of the types of residential and resort-type uses that you would potentially see on a large piece of property such as Walden Woods, any combinations of densities, single-family, multifamily, attached, you know, the golf course, community condominiums, multi-story type stuff. And what staff's conclusion was that that residential recreation land use designation could, in theory, accommodate any of the type of housing that the Zimmerman-Volk study says Heartland Township would be in the market for over the next five years. So, if the goal of going through this process is determining whether we have enough of any particular land use designation, the conclusion of staff is that there's certainly sufficient land designated, the residential recreation, given the acreage, mostly undeveloped acreage of the resort, and given the fact that it's, that land use designation is very broad in the type of housing it could accommodate. So, staff's conclusion is that the land use designation of residential recreation is appropriate for that area of the township, and that it covers a sufficient amount of developable land to accommodate the housing that we could potentially see over the next five or so years.
But you're not saying that we may not need to change other areas, while you say that this could accommodate what the Zimmerman-Volk study says, we may still need to look at other parcels?
Yes. Given the zoning of this property, I think what staff's conclusion is, is that where we should be with the residential recreation land use designation, but that's certainly not to say that we shouldn't continue the conversation of looking at other areas of the township and re-designating them to accommodate the types of housing that the Zimmerman-Volk study says we are in need of.
Any comments on that one?
Is that also in taking into consideration that Pleasant Valley and 59 area where we have a residential home builder already looking at those parcels, does that already take into consideration that, those housing elements?
Isn't it, does need a planning development?
Well, the special planning area.
The special planning area is planned for certain types of housing.
It's planned for, it's planned for a very broad mix of uses, including residential, some commercial, some office component, we're actually going to talk about that one in a little bit, and that does- that one in a little bit. And that does have the potential to accommodate a lot of the types of housing that, that the Zimmerman-Volk analysis.
So, so before we kind of, maybe before we decide whether we may need to set aside other land to accommodate certain housing alternatives that would not, would not otherwise be dealt with with regard to the, the recreation residential designation, we have some other areas that I think that we need to explore that may already been placed. I don't know if we necessarily need to do that at this juncture. That's just my thoughts on that.
Okay.
Because I think that's a huge parcel, and I think there's gonna be some significant density there. I think it's, it's just a matter of whatever that product that the developer plans are bringing there. Right now, it's single-family, right?
Well, we haven't seen any, any plans from them quite yet. They're, so Mayberry Homes is the potential buyer of our sewer properties, and their bread and butter is detached single-family. But we've also had discussions with them about them possibly bringing in a third-party developer who does something different, and that's still very much a moving target.
Okay, alright.
But given, I mean, we're gonna talk about the special planning area here in a minute, but given the, the number of sewer reuse that they've assumed by buying those properties, it only makes sense that they would be looking to do something of moderate to higher density in order to take advantage of the, all the sewer taps that they bought.
Any other questions on that particular one?
I just have a question. I still, I just still don't understand the designation of the residential recreation. I kinda see that it's, you know, it all, we can have a lot of different uses. So what I'm trying to understand is, could it become a whole golf course? The whole area? Is that one option where it could become all a golf course? Or all athletic fields? Or does it have to have a balance? Or, I just can't quite understand the whole intention of that zoning.
Of the land use designation?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's intentionally broad is what it is.
Very broad. But if they come in and say, you know what, this is what we wanna do, we wanna use this use, and we're gonna do it everywhere. Is that the intent of it too? Can that happen?
So, all that property is zoned, planned development, which again, by its very nature is, is a very broad zoning designation.
Sure, sure.
But what the planned development process also gives, gives you as a planning commission and then our township board is the opportunity to, you know, scrutinize the type of development they're bringing in, strive for things like these balances that we all wanna have between the residential and the recreation and any type of commercial component they may wanna bring in. You know, the planned development process is, is meant to be something of a, of a trade-off, I suppose, between the township and the developer. The, the developer has the potential to do a mixture of uses that would otherwise not be allowed if it was a straight residential or a straight commercial zoning district. But then the trade-off is, they have to provide the township with a, a development that's held to a higher standard, with the planned development, with, with the requirements for, you know, community benefits and those types of things. So, if and when the, the development, most likely, a property of this scale would, would come through in a number of phases.
Probably, absolutely.
It would take years or decades to, to really build out. But as, as those phases are getting reviewed and approved, you know, it would be the job of those of us sitting up here and, and, you know, whoever's sitting here years from now to ensure that, that it is a development that isn't too much of one and not enough.
So we have that ability. So I just didn't see anything in there, kind of spelling that out, and I just was just curious.
Yep. It's, it's intentionally drafted to be pretty broad and pretty widely encompassing.
And this designation actually came about, I think, prior to 2004. Our, the planner at that time was representative from McKenna and Associates who, I remember this because it was, he basically said it's very unique. It's a very unique, I think historically it was designed to preserve that which has already been there, you know, there's, there's things already in existence there, and then the natural features as well. And at the same time accommodate the reasonable business expectations or investment expectations of the, of the developer that are, you know, situated for that property. So it is a very unique kind of situation. But all golf courses are really temporary. They're designed, it's just, it's, it's an investment vehicle until such time that it gets developed. They don't last forever, so.
Okay.
And if you look at southeast Michigan, it's...
Oh, yeah. I understand that, yeah.
And they, and they've, they've had proposals to chip away at a piece, you know, 50 acre here, whatever.
Yeah, I've seen that.
So, so they, so they, they have a plan that maybe is a big master plan.
That's right.
They have components that they'll chip away at all the time.
Okay. I just wanted to understand if we had the ability to still keep a nice mix. Besides, I know it says protect the natural features.
Right.
But I thought, you know, if they come in and say, okay, we're protecting everything, but we wanna do all of harvests, or, I just didn't know if we had any bargaining with that.
Sure we do.
Okay, that's it, thanks.
Absolutely.
That's, that's the nature of planned development.
Okay.
All right, Dave, what do we got next?
So the next one is public quasi-public, which as the name implies are your township halls, your schools, your churches, your government buildings, your, your libraries, things like this. So that's the light purple on our future land use map. And a couple that I think, at least one that we're gonna hear about soon enough, or we have, it's this property between Autumn Woods and San Marino. So, where my cursor's moving right now. That's the Chestnut Development Parcel. It's nine acres. So originally that property was owned, or not originally, but up until recently it was owned by the Detroit Presbyterian, and it was always anticipated that they were gonna build a church there someday. Well, they have since sold it to a residential developer, and that residential developer has been before the planning commission, has been before the township board with a conceptual planned development plan, and is gonna be back in front of this planning commission two weeks from tonight with a revised version of that concept plan. One of the discussions that's been going on throughout the, this process of looking at this developer's proposal is, what is the density that we envision on that piece of property? And thus far, most of the discussions have been that it needs to be consistent with the residential develop, residential densities of the developments on either side of it. So on the east and the south side is the Autumn Woods Development, and on the west side is the, one of the five phases of San Marino Development. And as we're, we as a planning, as you as a planning commissioner go through this process, I think this property needs to be one that, that's scrutinized because it's, it's, the, the, the ball's already in motion on this one with a developer who wants to do something that is contrary to the comprehensive plan and that it's not a public quasi-public development. It's not a church, it's not a school, it's not a library. And so I think now is the time to, as we're working with that developer, determine whether the land use designation for this property, is it the same as on the neighboring properties? Or some of the discussions have been, should there be more density? Others have been that the density should stay the same as Autumn Woods and San Marino. So, I think this is one we have to take a look at from public quasi-public, because I don't think public quasi-public is the appropriate designation for it anymore. The other one that is, is top of mind is the schools property up on Clyde Road on the south side. I, I believe it's the, the property right abutting the township line. As we're continuing our conversations with the schools, it would probably make sense for that property to go to public quasi-public, given what the schools' intentions are for that property. The schools, last we've heard is holding it in anticipation of, you know, future growth in the school district. They don't have any immediate plans for it, but it, it would be an appropriate time to look at whether that should be re-designated public quasi-public. The other properties in the township zone, public quasi-public are primarily ones that already have a use, located on them that is consistent with that designation. So the township property in our park out here is zoned public quasi-public, or excuse me, master planned. The Heritage Park property is, is this one here, where the township has developed their ballfields. The schools, the library, the churches, every light purple property that you see on this map has one of those uses already on it, with the very notable exception of that one right there.
Dave, the cemeteries are also included in that public quasi-public heading, correct?
The, yes, for example, Reed Road and Fenton Road. This is, the name is escaping me.
Hodge.
Thank you. That's the cemetery up there. Over on the other side of the township in the Parksville area. South of Clyde? No. There? Maybe I need to clean, maybe that's one that, that does need to get noted.
Yeah, it's right there. That's the Smith.
Hodge, Smith, and, and historical.
This, as we're updating this map, that would, should be one of the things that we ensure is that the cemetery properties are designated as such public quasi-public on this map.
So where exactly, where is it actually located, Dave?
That's what I'm struggling with.
Cullen and Clyde can go south. There's a couple houses on the corner, and then there's Pine Hill Trail.
So it is that one. Okay.
It's on the east side of the river.
It's that little sliver. The, the roads on this map are, are wider than they need to be sometimes.
Why does...
So, okay, so we do have that one.
Okay, so there's those two.
And the one downtown.
The downtown.
Yep, there's the Village Cemetery.
And...
Library and the 51 Building and...
And I believe there's a fourth somewhere? Am I incorrect? I had spoke with Larry some time ago about this, and I thought he said there were four cemeteries. We've just accounted for three.
I think there's only...
Yeah, I'm struggling to think of what the fourth one would be.
I think there's only three.
I do, too.
Hodge, Smith, and Historical. I don't, I don't remember. I don't remember. There isn't a fourth one. There isn't a fourth one.
Me neither.
So according to Larry, on that note, according to Larry, Hodge is the only cemetery that's open. The others were closed. The others are full to capacity, other than, other than the cemetery in downtown, right, or in the historic area, he says, where there might be an opportunity to expand that cemetery.
So I will admit that the secretary was, excuse me, the cemeteries were always Clerk Hopkins' domain, and what I heard was always secondhand. I do, you're correct that there are lots of plots available at, at Hodge. At the Village Cemetery, I, I can't speak with certainty about what, what's still available there. I think there, I think there's open plots, but I think they're spoken for.
They're, at the Village, that's correct. The Village has a, it's, it's closed, but it's open to, it, it still has plots for those families that it reserves, reserve. And as plots, sometimes those same families sell their plots or make them available. When they become available, it's my understanding that the township was creating some sort of, well, I don't know how it was before, but there was a waiting list that those who, that when they would become available, you could purchase.
I've heard some interesting stories about how it was before.
Yeah, just out of history.
But that cemetery doesn't necessarily have property available to expand.
I, I guess I don't know that for sure.
We know those answers. I think you'd have to get a clerk's representative in here to talk about that.
And maybe that's something that has to be talked about, because Larry said there's a possibility to expand that cemetery.
That's again, a clerk and a, a board decision type of thing here.
So the only reason I'm bringing it up is, you know, I don't know if this is the time to talk about it. If Hodge is the only cemetery open, is Hodge large enough for, for the future expansion, for the needs? I don't know how to really answer that, but I just, had spoke again with Larry on that topic and...
You, you've got me curious about, Village Cemetery. Hodge, so here's Village Cemetery, and I don't get the impression that there's a lot of vacant grass still over there.
I think he was referring to expanding it, that you'd have to...
Acquire more land to do so?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Hodge Cemetery, if I could find it.
It's off of Reed Road.
Right.
Hold for, I'm not too far. All right, all right, thanks.
So I think all this area in through here is still available for future plots.
Yes. I will tell you, and I don't know the answer, this, it is a board, kind of a board decision, whether or not, what we know today, and would we, if we didn't have any cemeteries that we operate, whether we would be in the cemetery business.
Is that very, is that very profitable?
It's not, it's not a, it's, it was a function, I think, of, that falls on, you know, historically, that some townships were involved in. But if you notice, there's very few communities have continued that, or they've divested themselves as part of some, because, there's a lot of reasons for that. A lot of it is the perpetual care, and is that a reasonable thing, that taxes go towards the perpetual care? And, and so, I don't, I don't, I don't know without talking to the board, what the board would say about if, looking at potential needs for the township and whether we would expand on what we have. We certainly have enough plots available out at Hodge. I mean, I think there's still quite a few available there, so.
And that was to answer your question.
Yeah, yeah. And that topic, I think, could be picked up in round two of the comprehensive plan review, this being the residential component of completion, and then we're gonna come back and do the rest of it.
True. Have you ever, have you ever had a, someone come in for a, to, as part of their property, plan a cemetery on there?
Yes, we did have one.
I had, we had one too. It was a family plot.
Yep, that's what this was.
You had a family plot, okay. Now, that was years ago. I had never seen that before. Fascinating.
That was interesting.
You see them all the time down south, right?
Mm-hmm.
You're right. Especially southern states or something, you'll see them out in the middle of a cornfield or something.
Yep, I need... We have, we have the one I'm aware of, that we went through.
And there are a few family plots in Heartland, too. People off Cullen, I think it's not Cullen.
That's where I believe the one may be that we reviewed.
Well, there's one off of Brophy and Cullen, or, shoot, it's not Cullen, what's the one?
I mean, it is...
Know where Brophy comes down and dead ends, and then you, you get the wire? I think it's Cullen.
Oh, I think it's Brophy and Cullen.
Yeah.
There's an old one back in the woods.
Oh, yeah, there is.
Right off the road.
We used to take our kids there and scare them.
Interesting. Any other questions, comments about the public quasi-public tonight?
Yeah, I think, just reiterating maybe, I think what happens with this property is a lot of those questions are gonna get fleshed out in the coming weeks when we, a development proposal comes back before this planning commission and the township board.
Okay.
So the next one is the special planning area, which we've already touched on a little bit. F-59, both sides of the state highway, east, excuse me, west of Pleasant Valley slash Fenton Roads. So as most of you are aware, the township acquired the 30 acres on the north side, the 78 acres on the south side at the state's tax foreclosure auction because of delinquent sewer assessment payments. And the township has, late last year, entered into a purchase agreement with a potential residential developer to develop both the north and the south side. And then since that purchase agreement was agreed to in concept, that developer has come to the township to ask about their options for bringing in a third developer to look at the 30 acres on the north side. So, this is probably one of the key pieces in the township's development puzzle that is, is going to be developed in the next three, over the next two, three, five years. And one of the discussion points for the planning commission tonight and over the next few weeks is, the special planning area is defined right now in the comprehensive plan. It has a base density of three to four units per acre. And now, being a special planning area and being that this is in all likelihood gonna get developed as a planned development, that density is relatively flexible. But going through this process with the planning commission would be the time to look at this special planning area, look at how it's defined, and determine whether it's the appropriate vision for that area, and whether it encompasses the types of uses, residential and non-residential. and non-residential, that the township hopes to see, um, as we go through this, uh, development process with the, the, the developer who's just recently acquired it. I guess, well, I, the, the place I'd maybe want to start, unless you had a better idea, Trustee Kline, is, is the base density, three to four acres. Is, is that appropriate for those properties?
My first day here. Uh, well, does that align with the REUs?
So...
Let me ask that.
There's, uh, 500 REUs collectively on the north and the south side, um, collectively over 118 acres, give or take. So, doing some quick math in my head, uh, yeah, that lines pretty well with three to four.
Well, there was also, that was supposed to be a mixed-use, um, development, there had to be a, a special planning area, designed to have elements of commercial, elements of, of, uh, dense, dense, uh, residential, and then, as it spread out, the vision was to have larger acres, or larger lots, um, with larger houses on those lots. So it was sort of this mixed use that would combine kinds of several elements all at once, so that you might have some townhomes, you might have cottages, you might have, you know, 300 to 200 square foot of houses that you see maybe in cobblestone or something like that. That's what that was envisioned with, with the upfront area being much more commercial, and then across the way, perhaps more attached-type, um, residential dwellings, I thought, I think.
That sounds right.
Going off memory now, it's been 12 years, but, or 10 years, but they also contemplated that the parcel to the left, you know, sort of the aisle shape, that was owned by a different developer, and he was in partnership with the developer that owned the two parcels. I don't know what the status is going to be with Andy, um, what's his name, the last?
Jovanetti.
Jovanetti, yeah, Jovanetti. I don't know if he still owns it, or, or if he's going to be working with Mayberry Homes, or how that's going to all develop. So then the question is, is, should we even be referring to this as an SBA any longer? I mean, there was a big, bigger vision when you had, you know, these developers were working together to kind of, I mean, at one point in time, the folks who owned the land around the golf course, Heartland Glen, were even looking to somehow partner, uh, with them to kind of have this sort of development that really was comprehensive and enough, almost like its own area too, as part of the SBA, but they were, weren't anywhere near what those two developers that owned the lands where they were at. Then, of course, housing market crash, life got difficult.
Right.
So, um, I don't know, I mean, what's the, I mean, I, and I, and I really don't know the answer to this, I'm just posing the question, does it make sense to continue with the designation as an SBA, when it's probably going to be a planned unit development anyway, or planned development anyway, correct?
Right, and, and I think my top of mind answer would, to your question, would be yes, then i- if we anticipate that it's going to be developed as a planned development, then having the, having it backed up by a land use designation of a special planning area is a consistent...
Is consistent, yeah, okay, that's good.
Yeah, and I think where, I think we've had this conversation, that what we need to do is make sure that the special planning area description of what's permitted is going to allow us to get what we want to get there, so we need to review the what's permitted, and if we don't want something in there, get it out of there, and if we want to make sure we get that density in there, make sure that we've got it covered, and, and give it to them that way. They've certainly bought that.
That's per, that, I mean, they bought the property with the intention of reading all that, knowing what it offered them.
Yeah, they've, uh, I mean, while we haven't seen any concepts from them yet, and obviously there's still, uh, you know, the fact that they're potentially bringing in a third party, and so there's obviously some negotiations there, um, they've certainly been very interested in the concept plans that the previous developer, uh, was working with the township on. Um, and they're not necessarily opposed to bringing in a commercial developer who could specialize on maybe a commercial component along the M-59 frontage, just like the previous concept plan showed. So the, what, what Mayberry Homes has in mind for these properties is, is, is still, as I used earlier, a moving target. Um, I have not heard anything from them to give me a reason to think they're pursuing the Jovanetti property.
No, I, I didn't hear that.
If they are, it hasn't come up with us, and, and I suppose it's, um, I know one of the things they're working on right now is, uh, doing a cost analysis of getting municipal water down to there, um, because that's about, it's about a mile and some change, mile and a quarter, I think, from where the township, uh, water service ends at the ice arena. So, they're looking to, to see what the cost of that would be. So, Mayberry Homes is still very much working on, uh, doing their due diligence on, on the purchase, but I think as Chairman Fox stated, and he stated it better than, better than I did, was, what I hope to accomplish is looking at the special planning area as it was defined and approved when the comprehensive plan was updated in 2011, and see whether the planning commission feels that's still the appropriate vision for that property, or does it need to evolve, are there any uses that aren't spoken to in here that maybe should be now, or are there any uses that we look at now and say that's not necessarily, uh, um, what the vision would be? Or do we look at it in the context of, we have some sense of what the current owner has in mind, and do we feel that as the special planning area is defined right now, is that, uh, is, is that, is that appropriate?
Well, I'll add the food for thought, so when we get into this conversation, I think a component of, I'll call it the neighborhood service commercial down there would make a lot of sense, where you have the ability to have a dry cleaner and a small, um, like a, I'll, I'll use the word convenience store, just those things that could help service that amount of people that's close. Now, that, we're not going to put a Myers in there, we've already got one three miles down the road, but, but that smaller type service thing, I think you're going to have enough population there that it would be to the benefit of servicing those people, and it would be to the benefit of the traffic at the interchange to not send them there to go pick up their dry cleaning, or, or those types of things. So, that, that special planning, planning area has a lot of that type of opportunity in it, and, and I would only say that as somebody that came and bought the property, Mayberry looked at that, and to dramatically change it would probably, might not work for what they were thinking, certainly, we've got to look at what we were thinking, but we certainly thought that worked for a long time.
Yes.
So to radically change it, I, I'm not, I'm not seeing that in my mind personally, but certainly we have to talk about it at a future meeting.
Larry, down in Howell on M-59, doesn't Mayberry own property at, um, M-59, and would be Michigan Avenue, north side of M-59, west of that, maybe it's Oak Grove Road there?
The Town Commons Development?
Yeah, isn't that their development?
That is, well, they've acquired it.
Okay.
They were, they, they were not the original developer there. Um, they are, they own it now, and they are developing it now.
Because they have something similar there, where the homes are in back, and out front there's, there's businesses.
There, there is, but that development, and for reasons I don't know, has always struggled on the commercial end of it. You know, there, that, those businesses were up in the front end every day of the week, there was somebody moving out, somebody moving in, nothing that I'm aware of has succeeded there. Maybe it's going to be different, but Mayberry's got a hold of it. But, there's got to be enough of it to have enough synergy that it works, and you can't just have three little, three little stores, or that's not going to survive. So, the concept of what they had going on in the special planning area before, I felt had enough volume to it to create enough of a reason to go there, that, that there could be enough there, and I kind of picked that up from some of our developers, by the way. Non-special planning area developers. But you need to have enough there to make people go there.
Critical mass. So, that, that's what I'd like to get some feedback on as we move ahead, is, uh, is this vision of the special planning area, um, still appropriate as it's defined, and is still appropriate in, in that location? Okay? And then the, the last one, um, is the natural resource conservation recreation, so this is a land use designation that, um, is still included in the, in the, um, the key of our map, but it's not included on the map, um, on the 2011 version of the map. So if, if we were to go back to the 2004 version of this future land use map of Heartland Township, what you would see is this conservation recreation buffering all the township's water courses, the lakes, the rivers, the streams, and for whatever reason, and I wasn't here for it, the 2011 land use map, that conservation recreation designation buffer along our water courses did not carry over. So, the, the 2015 version of this map, um, may not necessarily have that conservation recreation, uh, carry over onto it either, but it, it makes sense to keep it as a definition in the, um, comprehensive plan, so that wind development is proposed along our water courses, our sensitive, and, you know, our sensitive water courses, as most of them are. We, you as a planning commission, myself as the, the planning department, need to be cognizant of the impacts that development has on these water courses, and how that impacts the, the whole water system, and the whole community, and the, the community outside of Heartland Township, and, and just be aware that, um, we need to be good stewards of, of those natural resources, um, to continue to be. And so, we feel that this designation should remain in our, in our future land use plan, in our future land use map, and, and should continue to be an important part of what we look at as planners, um, and, and that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention tonight, just to make it clear that it's something of a holdover from the, the 2004 plan, that we want to maintain in the 2015 update.
Questions, Tom?
Well, we do have them.
So Dave, we're revisiting these in the future, is what you're saying, all of this?
We are. Uh, I, I should have started out my, my talk tonight by saying that. I know at our December 18th meeting of the planning commission, uh, after the meeting, we, we talked about continuing on with this process of updating the comprehensive plan, and I know that at the time, Clerk Hopkins, we, we knew was, was ill, but at the time we all hoped that, uh, he was going to pull through, but, um, we, we talked then about, you know, kind of pumping the brakes a little bit on this process of updating the comprehensive plan. We, as a planning department, at least wanted to get these last five designations in front of you, uh, just because these are the last five, this would then be kind of a natural breakpoint in, in taking a, a, a reprieve from going through this process, and now's as good a time as any, because I think our January 29th meeting is going to be pretty full, uh, which we'll talk about when we get to the planners' report. But, we wanted to get these to you, and at least give you, uh, be able to say that we went through all the designations that we said we were going to talk about, uh, give you an opportunity to chew on everything we've been through, and then, yes, to answer your question, Chair Fox, uh, come back at a not-too-distant future, and start getting some serious discussion of what is the, the updated version of this map look like.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so I guess we're on to item, item 9B, which is our summary or timeline of the 2015 comprehensive plan update.
Yeah, I think, I think it was Commissioner Voight who requested something like this, uh, just sort of a summary of everything we've talked about up until now, and what the staff recommendations were, and what was the planning commission's opinion, that's what this, uh, uh, summary is meant to do. Um, I don't necessarily need to go over it, uh, because I would be, you know, repeating what we've already talked about, but if nothing else, our hope is that it's a good resource, that if anyone needs to go back and say, yeah, what did, what did we say about that, uh, that particular designation, hopefully this memo, you know, tells you what was that and when was it said, when, when did we say it?
Any questions on that?
No, that was helpful for me.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll come in and...
Brought you up.
It did, it was very helpful.
Okay, well then, let's move on to item 10A, which is our, well, we'll go to 10, which is our annual planning commission organizational, uh, portion of our meeting, and 10A, which is our commission bylaws, and I guess we're going to turn it back to Dave here real quick.
The, um, so every year, first meeting of the year, we, the planning commission looks at the bylaws, it's actually in the bylaws that you should look at the bylaws every year. So, the planning commission, I think last, actually updated the bylaws maybe 2013, last year they were reaffirmed, um, this year, the planning commission has the option of reaffirming what's already in the bylaws, or if there's, uh, thoughts on amending them, now's the time to talk about it. Um, what we want to do as part of this annual organization meeting, which this meeting tonight is, is, is first, uh, if, if it is the planning commission's desire, reaffirm the bylaws, um, once we reaffirm the bylaws, then we can move on to election of officers, and once the officers have been elected, then whoever the planning commission chair is going to be, uh, will make the committee appointments. So it's kind of a, a three-step process that, that we should be doing every year, and looking at and reviewing the bylaws is the first step in that. And if the planning commission so chooses, we've offered a, a proposed, a recommended motion.
Any questions on the bylaws? Uh, Dave gave you a pretty good summary of what was going on there. Now, I, I think we're ready to entertain the motion as presented.
I'll move to reaffirm the Heartland Township Planning Commission bylaws as written, then them only for the purpose of referencing January 15th, 2015, as most recent date of review.
Support that. All right, we have a motion to reaffirm the planning commission bylaws from Commissioner Kline, a second from Commissioner Voight. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Suppose name motion carries.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, so hopefully at our next meeting, we'll be able to, uh, get signatures from the planning commission chair, the vice chair, and the secretary, so that we can give you a final version of these bylaws with everybody's signatures on them, that you can include in your, uh, your resource binder, that I know you all carry around with you wherever you go.
Joe, are you carrying yours?
I, I carry mine.
That's awesome.
Dave, Dave, I have one.
Oh, it's old stuff.
Sorry. I had to.
All right, um, item 10B, 2015 planning commission election of officers, uh, as Dave said, we do this annually. Um, this year, obviously, we have a change, um, at least in one of the positions here, and, um, I will say that Keith and I have had a discussion, and Keith is, um, interested, um, graciously accepted the opportunity to put himself out there for secretary, if the planning commission so desires. Jeff Newsom and I had a conversation, he's absent this evening, and he said even in his absence, he would be willing to accept a nomination, if you were so inclined to give him the nomination as the vice chair, he would take anything but chair.
And at the risk of, uh, attaining the election, I noticed that Chairperson Fox's nameplate, uh, actually says Chairperson, so if it were to be somewhere else, then you would be, uh, costing the taxpayers of Heartland Township the cost of a new, a new nameplate, so just take that under advisement.
But I have, I have to...
Can there be a budget amendment for that?
It was your shame, Mike.
I have this Chairperson Mitchell one already made up.
Okay.
Was Jeff in charge of vice?
Yeah.
He's in charge for it. So, um, and certainly, uh, if there's anybody else that would like to step forward on any of those, this is a, a different situation this year, but, uh, but those are the three names that have been brought up so far.
I'll move to approve, um, Larry Fox as chair, uh, second motion, uh, Keith Voight as secretary, and third motion, Jeff Newsom as vice chair.
Move all those. Okay, I'll support that. Okay, so we have a, we have three motions, um, all made by Commissioner Kline, and seconded by Commissioner Mitchell, is there any discussion? Anybody backing out? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose name motion carries. Okay, we're good. Um, item 10C, we do this also annually, a lot of the appointments are still the same, those people that were on said they wanted to be, um, with, obviously, the change, with one staff member. Um, so speaking to those, uh, I'm going to appoint myself and Keith Voight to the site plan review committee, Keith replacing Larry Hopkins, and our ordinance review committee is going to remain sugressum Keith Voight and Tom Murphy. So, I don't believe that needs a motion, Dave?
But you as the planning commission chair, make those appointments.
Is everybody okay with it?
Good?
Yep. Okay. Um, on to, by the way, thank, Jeff Newsom... On to, by the way, Jeff Newsom, thanks, everybody, for the voter confidence. And thank you also. Item 11 called as a public, we have none. We're up to item 12, the planners' report. Dave?
My turn to talk. So, obviously, with the very sad passing, not only of Clerk Hopkins, but then also of our ZBA chair, Don Hill, Don was also a former township trustee, both of those happened right around the same time, in late December, and both of those were very sad, and in addition to losing good people and good friends, we also lost some, a couple gentlemen who played significant roles here in the township. So, now, we, as township staff, have been scrambling to fill the roles that they left behind. So, some of that has been addressed here tonight with the election of officers and so on, and with trustee Kline being our new representative from the board. Just bringing up speed, since the planning commission coordinates efforts in some ways with the ZBA, so just bringing up speed on where we will now be with the ZBA. So, with passing of Don Hill, we lost the ZBA chair. So, what we have now is two reappointments to the ZBA. Mike Mitchell will be appointed on January 20 by the township board to be the planning commission's representative on the ZBA, and Bruce Douglas, back in December, was reappointed to a three-year term with the ZBA. And then, we have two new appointments. Jim Otis will be a regular member, and I'm going to mess up his last name, but Ed Segwin was originally appointed as a alternate, but then, with Don Hill's subsequent passing, Ed Segwin will be, I guess, promoted to being a regular member. That's going to happen on January 20, that promotion, so by the ZBA's first meeting on January 21st, all those appointments will be made. What we'll still have is a vacancy for the second alternate position, and I know the board and the supervisor are working on finding someone to fill that vacancy. So, at their first meeting on January 21st, the ZBA is going to do some of what the planning commission just did, which is elect a new chair and a vice chair. And once the township board has an opportunity to appoint a new township clerk, then that clerk will then be the recording secretary for the ZBA. In the meantime, Treasurer Horning is the acting secretary for the ZBA until some time is there, is a new township clerk appointed. I mentioned that on January 29th, the planning commission is going to have a pretty full plate. These are ones that I've all mentioned before, but I'll mention them again, a public hearing for a drive-through fast food, this is the KFC next door to Heartland Point Plaza, Heartland Point Plaza is the shopping center with the Little Caesar's, and the Sherwin-Williams, and the Big B Coffee. So, just west of there is some vacant property that is potentially going to be a drive-through KFC. I mentioned the concept plan for Chestnut Development on the vacant nine acres between Autumn Woods and San Marino. They will be back before the planning commission on January 29th with a revised concept plan. And the vacant property on the south side of Maxfield Road, on the south end of Maxfield Lake, where we've seen, this planning commission has seen some residential developments proposed prior, this time around, the new owners of the property are proposing a 21-unit site condominium on that land, and a preliminary site condominium plan will likely be before the planning commission on January 29th.
Is that, is that a attached or detached?
Detached. Single-family site condominium.
Oh, single?
Yes, sir. The planning department's zoning inspector resigned his position, so the planning department will be looking for our third zoning inspector in about the last six months.
Kind of hard on those guys.
I must be, I'm a really tough boss, apparently. But, yeah, I think we're going to maybe go at the search a little differently, I think we may, when I say we, myself and township manager Wickman, this may be an opportunity to reevaluate the position and the role of the position, and expectations, and so on and so on, and make sure that what that job is, is what we want it to be moving forward. And once we know that, then we'll know who the right individual is for that position. But in the meantime, everybody behave yourselves, because we're without a zoning inspector again. And I will continue to promote it, Hartland Township's first annual family winter fest is January 31st at Heritage Park from noon to 8:00. And it's going to be great, and it's going to be the first time, and so hopefully, all the annual winter fest that we have subsequent to this one are going to be even better and better. There's going to be fireworks, there's going to be ice skating, there's going to be a beer tent, all sorts of fun stuff, and we encourage everyone here at this planning commission and our vast audience watching around the world to come out to the first annual winter fest on January 31st. Those are the things that I have noted to bring up before the planning commission this evening.
All right. So, item 13, committee reports. Joe, I didn't get to talk to you, this is where if you've got anything to say, you're allowed to say it.
Nope, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
All right, we do it different than the bar, we don't call them out individually, so, anybody have anything this evening?
Okay, I'm sorry, before you, just real quick, in front of all of you are some additional information to add to your resource binders. Of note is the contact information, please take a look at that, and make sure your phone numbers, your email addresses, everything on there is correct. If we need to change it, then please let me know, just so that everybody sitting at this table knows how to get ahold of everyone.
Well, my phone number is incorrect, and my email's not there, so...
That's, we wanted to make sure that you were paying attention.
You know what I'm going to do, Dave, I'll correct mine and hand it to you.
Everybody who asks corrections, if you could take yours, make the corrections, give them back to me, we will bring, I guess, since we know there's corrections, go ahead and recycle these now. Get them back to me, we'll get you revised versions of these at the next meeting, that hopefully will be 100% perfect.
Great.
I'm sorry, that's, now I'm done.
You're good. Now, do you have anything?
I just wanted to mention that with the winter fest, another activity that I think is going to get added, it's not really an activity, but the Red Cross is planning on being there with a presentation or a table that they have set, we set up, and this goes over what the disaster response team does, and the fact that we're still there and around, and what we do in the community, and blood drive, there's also a lot of handouts that we have for preparedness of pretty much most of the emergencies, so just look them up when you're there.
Do you do a blood drive there, and then we go and have a beer?
It's better that way than the other way.
I was going to say the other way.
No, no blood drive, we're not actually attached to the blood drive, it's part of the disaster response team, kind of two different entities.
Okay.
But we'll tell you where they're at, and you load it on your own.
Then I drive home.
Anything else tonight? All right, motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Support? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both may motion carries. Thank you, and good night.